Good evening. I'd like to call to order this special town council meeting, the public hearing on the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. Please rise for a moment of silence. Will I have the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Bischbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Loterno. Marone. Morgenstein.
Here.
Chortel.
Here.
Testa. Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Servoni.
Here. Good evening, everyone. Residents, mayor, department heads. We're going to review with you how this evening will proceed. This is for everyone, so please pay attention. This is the public hearing on the budget. The town council will not be answering questions tonight. The council is here to listen to you tonight. Departments are here to answer questions with regard to their budgets for the next fiscal year 2018-2019. I'll read a list of the departments. Everyone, please listen for your department, whether you're the head or you're the person who has a question for that department. Residents, if you wish to speak on a budget-related question for a department, when you hear that department called, please signal to me and that department will remain. At the end of the department roll call, I'll ask the public if they did not hear a department called. We are asking all department heads to stay here until we excuse them, as we'd like to accommodate some latecomers. Thirty to forty minutes into the meeting, a final call of the department list will be made. Following the final call, if there have been no responses at all for a department, we will excuse that department head for the evening. We will call all departments to the panel table. We'll call on questioners alternately from each side of the auditorium, so if you have questions, please line up at the microphones. When you've been called, we'll call alternately and until there are no more questions for that department. When you have been called forward to ask your questions, speak your name, your address slowly and clearly into the microphone so that it may be heard by everyone and correctly recorded for the record. Please do not call out anything from your seat. Just come forward to the microphone and wait your turn. Please state your questions. Please be considerate of others with your time, as I imagine there will be some questions from a variety of people on a variety of topics and we'd like to keep the evening moving forward. With that, the mayor has asked to start this meeting with a few remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to everyone. It's an important occasion. The budget for the town describes the services, our capabilities, for the coming fiscal year. I want to make a few comments, though, with regard to the backdrop that we are all living with and faced with in making decisions. Budgets are made up of revenues and expenditures. Now, for the town of Wallingford, the prime three areas of revenues are: state of Connecticut grants, increase in the town's taxable property list, the grand list, and property tax paid by all the residents in the community, residents and businesses. Also as a backdrop, what are the general conditions that we're aware of with regard to the state, the economy, et cetera? Personal income in 2017, on the average, rose 1.5% in Connecticut. That's the lowest of all of the states in the Northeast. Growth of employment from 2010 to the present has averaged in Connecticut 1/10 of 1% increase. The current state budget, the 1718 budget, has an expected deficit of $198 million. The 1819 budget, which was adopted last October, has an anticipated $260 million deficit, which at this point, it does not appear that the legislature will be dealing with either of those two issues before they adjourn. Lack of state fiscal stability increases our vulnerabilities with regard to state grants. We're promised certain grants which are part of this proposed 1819 town budget. But, as we've seen in the past, some of those grants may not be paid as a result of lack of money at the state level, which obviously creates a huge question and problem for local government. Now, Wallingford's grand list decreased by 6/10 of a percent, and in dollars, that's $750,000 less than we received in the 1718 year. So in effect, all of the vulnerabilities, all of the lack of revenue from the grand list and/or the state means an automatic increase in our property taxes paid by businesses and residents in the town of Wallingford. Our effort has been to try to maintain services as we know them, but there are several things that I want to emphasize. One is we've offset the tax increase by use of $6.2 million from our reserves. So that would be about a million and a half more we would be paying if we did not use those reserves. We're delaying funding on a fire truck. We incrementally try to build into budgets amounts of money to pay for large capital projects. We're not going to be able to do that in this year. That's $220,000 for a fire truck that will be needed in the future. We're increasing the public works budget by $82,000 for salt. And the reason for that is we are being reduced in state grants this year, which in the past were used for purchase of salt. So we generally use a five-year average in identifying what money is needed for salt for winter use, obviously. And we've had to add $82,000 to that because we were scrambling this year for an adequate amount of money for salt. We maintain our credit reserve, believing that we need to maintain the fiscal integrity and stability of the town of Wallingford or all of our services are in serious doubt. We are increasing our bonded debt payments by $800,000, and that is for both school and police department capital projects. We're looking to hire two additional police officers for townwide safety purposes. Our effort is to maintain existing services, but this budget, as proposed, requires an 8/10 of a mill tax increase. It's a 2.8% increase in local taxes. Now, we have people who will have a difficult time paying their current taxes, let alone an increase. And one of the items that tell tales in the wind that I've pointed to in the past is the eligibility for free and reduced lunch in the schools. It's now 22% of the student population. That's approaching 1/4 of the school population eligible for free and reduced lunch. That says something about the wealth in the community and people who are in dire straits. So with those comments, again, I appreciate everyone's interest in the budget. It truly is a description of what we can and may not be able to do in the coming year. Your attendance here shows your concern and your belief that in Wallingford, anything's possible. We work together and we can achieve great things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. With that, we'll start the roll call. Animal control, any questions? You're here, I see that. Board of Assessment Appeals. Board of Education. Really?
No.
Oh, one. Board of Ethics.
Yes.
Oh, two for the Board of Education. Board of Ethics.
Yes.
Board of Selectmen. Building Department. With the Board of Education, I meant to call the cafeteria, anybody for the cafeteria, that being the schools. Capital Appropriations Reserve and Force. Nope. Capital and nonrecurring. Capital and nonrecurring fund. Civil preparedness. Conservation Commission. The contingency account. Debt service. Economic Development Commission. Electric Division. Employee insurance and other employment benefits. Engineering. Finance Department. Yes. Fire Department and EMS. Government access TV. Health Department. Inland Wetlands. Insurance property and casualty. Law Department. Library. Mayor's Office. Park and Recreation. Pension Funds. Personnel pensions and risk management. Planning and zoning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Police Department. Probate Court. Program planning. Public Utilities Commission. Public Works Department. Register our Voters. Sewer Division. Six-year capital. Town Council Office. Town Clerk's Office. Utilities, electric first. That's different than the PUC. Oh, I did. Yes, I did. All right, water or sewer divisions? Veteran Services Office. Youth and Social Services Bureau. And then from the Social Services Contributions, Wallingford Center, Inc. Center Street Cemetery. Columbus House, the emergency shelter. Oh, you're the representative. Thank you for coming. But it looks like we have no questions for you. So thank you very much for coming. Public Celebrations Committee. Masters Manor. The Wallingford Committee on Aging, including the Bus Transit Program. The Wallingford 2020 Celebration, or the 350th. The Historic Matching Program. And SCOW, the Spanish Community of Wallingford 1. All right. So, planning and zoning and Zoning Board of Appeals, you have another meeting to get to, and there were no questions for your department, so I am going to go ahead and dismiss you. Economic Development and Program Planning. I think you're going to the same meeting. And there were no questions for you, so I will dismiss Economic Development Program Planning. Youth and Social Services. There were no questions for you, and you also have another meeting. So I will dismiss you as well. And that moves us right to the Board of Education. All right, if you have questions for the Board of Education, would you please come forward?
How you doing, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road? Good evening. That goes directly to him.
Please.
The question is, I know it came up in one of your workshops earlier in the year, and I know it's been mentioned in the past. How are you moving towards looking for a study for one high school?
In our strategic plan budget, we do have allocated funds to go out to bid for professional services in that area. Actually, today I was finalizing a draft of to-go-to purchasing to go out to bid in that regard. We're going to try to get that out by no later than the end of this week to purchasing, to review. The goal is to have it go out. At this point, the board would have to determine how to fund that. One of the ways, since it's not a reoccurring expenditure, could be using some unencumbered funds from this year, and we would have to discuss at that board level. But we are actively pursuing this. It's not sitting on the back burner until a budget is approved. We felt that we had timelines that we want to go forward. Worst-case scenario, we don't move forward with it, but at least we have it out to bid.
And when you have some timeline, so you must have some idea when you'll be getting this back and then the process would be?
Sure, our goal would be to try to get it out by early May. Usually, it's a three-to-four-week turnaround time. If there's questions that are provided to the Board of Education on the part of outside consultants, we have to answer those questions for everyone. And the idea would be that as soon as the board approves its budget and allocation, we could then allocate the funds, which hopefully would be June, the latest July 1st. The idea would be that depending on the scope of the work that the different groups put forth, because it'll be a two-part bid, it'll be qualifications, and then the money would be the second part. It could take anywhere from, we've heard from other districts, like Milford has done one over the last three to four years. It could take anywhere from two to four months to acquire, to collect all the data, which then would be shared with the public in public session and go from there.
Thank you.
Mr. Gross, I would also add that the survey that we're looking to do would, I know you used to ask specifically about high school, but it also was including our middle schools.
Which would be fabulous.
So, yeah, it's all.
I figure one step at a time with this town.
The other thing that I just want to mention, so it'd be a 612 study, thank you for bringing that up. But we also are really having a strong influence, or we want to have impact from an outside group on some ideas regarding not just what the buildings look like and structures, but also about programming. So that's a little bit of a unique slant to what our proposal is looking for. So that's why we've been modifying it and.
In one high school or in one middle school, you can offer so much more programming in one unit because you'll have a bigger pool to choose from and more money because you'll be saving money with one school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Monarazzo. Name an address for the record. I gave half of it away.
Rocco Monarazzo, 431 North Main Street, Wallingford. Dr. Menzo, hi.
Good to see you.
Haven't talked to you in a while. I've left you alone.
If you could speak up, Rocco.
I've got a question as far as the budget goes. Has there been any discussion about resource officers in the school, obviously with our latest news and events?
Yes. The resource officers have been asked each year, have been requested each year for the last three years. What we are, where we are with this is they would have to be funded through the police department budget, and they would have to be hired through the police department. So we have made that proposal. There was an alternative proposal, or request based on the community meeting that we had here at the beginning of March that we presented to the mayor as an addendum to our budget when we presented it, or later last, at the end of March for the mayor to review. At this time, we do have a meeting. I know I have a meeting later this week with the police chief and the mayor to discuss a variety of security options. So it is still on the table for discussion. You know, with the Board of Education is something that we definitely see as something that we want to take into consideration and pursue. So it is still on the table for discussion.
Is it looking positive or you don't know, it's just on the table?
At this, at this point, again, based on the budget that was presented, the proposal from the mayor, we are looking at a reduction of about $883,000 to our recommended budget of a 2.42%. So the recommendation of the mayor is 1.6. Doing some work over the last several weeks, we don't stop working on the budget. We do believe that there are some adjustments that could be made to accommodate. The number-one priority of the strategic plan was the social-emotional services, so the social workers. Adding those plus sustaining services. Beyond that, we're still looking at numbers from a Board of Ed perspective. Again, this is not just a Board of Ed topic. It's also to make certain that there is the participation on the part of the police department, which, again, I can't speak for other departments. So I think we're, from a Board of Ed perspective, and I would have Ms. McKay as board chair also weigh in on this. It is definitely on our list for discussions. And I guess we just need to take some additional guidance. I believe I need to take some additional guidance from other departments.
Yeah, I would, you know, just, I guess I would reiterate Dr. Menzo's comments. Certainly, from the Board of Ed's perspective, it is high on our priority list. I think our number-one definitely was the social worker psychologist. So we were really excited to hear that that's kind of finding its way. So it's a work in progress, and we'll see where it all lands. It's a challenge when you've got an item that's a recurring expense like that, like that of personnel. So you want to be careful how you may have funds available from, it's just that you always want to look at that when you know it's a recurring versus a one-time expenditure. So we're really focused on that, and we'll see if we can accommodate it.
I appreciate it. I appreciate, I know you've gone to some extents to make things safe and secure for our kids.
And I have to say, the community support has been phenomenal.
Yeah.
I have met with one of our community members just last week who stepped up and wants to help out, looking at getting some donations. So once we're ready to do that, we have a parent who is helping us facilitate some conversations with some resources. Once we're ready to do that, we're then going to be reaching out to our parent organizations because a lot of the things that we want to do, they are expensive. And, you know, we do want to make sure that cost is not a factor in student safety, but unfortunately, it is something that we have to embed within our discussions and our outcomes. But we do appreciate the support of everyone. Every, I have to say, it's, I feel somewhat fortunate, and I shouldn't say somewhat fortunate, very fortunate, because when I talk to my colleagues in other districts, there hasn't been as much collaboration or willingness for people to just step up and send an email and say, "We're not mad, but we just want to get involved." And I think that's a fantastic quality of Wallingford, and that's why I'm here.
Absolutely. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On my left, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Molly Whitehouse, 30 West State and Hill Road. So I'm here today more just to advocate for the social workers in the schools. So if you don't mind bearing with me, I prepared something for you. So I'm here today as a social worker in New Haven, so I work with adults with chronic mental illness. I see the result of overburdened mental health systems where people fall through the cracks they see every day. Believe me, we don't want our children to get caught in the gaps of our school systems. Schools, whether we like it or not, can and are an essential part of the safety of our communities. We also know that the children who bully, as well as the children with trauma and other invisible challenges, sometimes, very often have struggles at home. Schools, in particular, mental health professionals in schools can offer the extra support these kids may not have access to at home. One of the most well-known studies out there about the impact of trauma and other negative experiences on children is the ACE, or the Adverse Childhood Experience Study. I'm sure you're familiar with that. It's a longitudinal study that tracked the outcomes of children based on the number of adverse events that they've experienced in childhood. These include experiences such as physical, sexual, emotional abuse. That's kind of more on the acute end of these experiences. But on the more normative or common stressors, you see substance abuse in the household, mental illness in the household, or something as common as parental separation or parental, you know, having to leave the home for some sort of medical issue or something along those lines. And what we end up seeing in these children is that longitudinally, as adults, they end up having a number of issues, the most common being medical health issues such as obesity, heart disease, diabetes. Then we also see more of the mental health effects such as substance use or, you know, any other myriad thing you could think of. So at the top of the meeting, Mayor Dickinson talked about increased use of some of our support programs. He primarily spoke about the free or reduced-cost lunch. One of the, one of the main outcomes of the ACE study is finding that kids with more of these adverse experiences tend to either live in impoverished houses or grow up to be in poverty themselves. And we know the many, many mental and physical stresses that come along with living in poverty. So it's just, that data alone, I think, is just one of the many, many reasons why we want to make an investment in our children now so that they can grow up to be the leaders of our community, so that they can grow up to be healthy people who raise healthy children, who then come back to our schools. So I just want to make a point to advocate for that. Thank you.
You're welcome. If I may comment, I just want to reiterate what I just said earlier. Last week, we, throughout the budget process, we're constantly revising and editing what we have to do. Our district, it's not like a business where you could kind of, it's not a static opportunity or organization. So what we always do, and if you look at my budget every year, at the end of the year, at the end of the budget presentation, the PowerPoint will say things that we're going to continue to do as we move forward. And it talks about looking at our utilities, looking at our severance, looking at our staffing, looking at our special ed. So as we continue to do that, last week, we were able to pull together my central office team and a combination of savings in those areas. team and a combination of savings in those areas, as well as looking at utilizing unencumbered funds to purchase our textbooks for next year, this year. It puts us in a position where we can accommodate with the mayor's proposed budget the four social workers, plus the same services. So we've been able to make that work, it doesn't get us the rest of the strategic plan items just yet, so we'll continue. As I always write in my message to my staff members, who I want to thank, our board members and some of our teachers, who are always working with us, and I know one of them who's always here for me, at every meeting, they always know that I say that a budget process in an education system is not a sprint, it's a marathon. And we're at just probably the second or third leg of the race, but there's at least two or three more to go. So we will continue to hone in on these, on these numbers and work together, but I am pleased and proud to say that on the hard work, based on the hard work that our district staff has done in utilizing lean strategies at the administrative level, we have been able to, I believe, get us to a point where the social workers would be included in our sustained services budget.
Oh, good, I'm really glad to hear that, because I really do think that this is where we enrich our community and, you know, in the long run, where we end up saving money because we have a healthier, healthier community overall. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you, on my right.
Hi, good evening, Sarah Vining, 399 North Main in Wallingford. Hey, Dr. Menzo.
Good to see you.
I just have a couple of questions I need to bring back to some of my parents, I'm very involved with the PTAC over at Lyman Hall, been very involved in, throughout all levels of my daughter's education. And as a parent, there's a couple of different questions that we have, so I just wanted to bring to the table. While we understand that the budget was at a certain amount, and it did get reduced, specifically, we wanted to talk a little bit more about the resource officers, and I appreciate you answering my fellow parents' question on that, too. I guess one of the confusions is where would the money come from to pay for the resource officers? Would it be just coming from the board, would it be coming from the police department, too?
Again, we, when we broached this topic three years ago now, it was discussed, and we had put it in our strategic plan budget. At that time, it was discussed that these would have to be police department staff members, and so therefore, it was the understanding that each year thereafter, I would make the request, which I do annually to the chief, I say, you know, this is what we're looking for, he puts together his budget appropriately, so, and then the recommendation then goes to his department head, which would be the mayor. So that's the way that I proceeded. I think that we've also shared three years ago with the town council, when this was the first, three or four years ago, I always get my dates wrong, but I think it's three years ago, when we shared with the town council the first time around, we did, we did an analysis of all the districts in our DIRK, our district reference group, and whether or not they had SROs and who funded them. The majority of them, actually with the exception of two, which I think now are transitioned over to the town also, were funded by the town, not by the Board of Education budget. So that was one of the pieces of information that was shared with the town council at that point, and we're in the process of finalizing an updated list of that for the town council when we present to them again, or share information with them on the 26th of this month. We do have the job description, the job description, you know, as we put forth, is somewhat unique. I think one of the misunderstandings that potentially could be out there is that an SRO, you know, is only at the school, and then if there's a local emergency, an emergency immediately surrounding the school, they leave the school and go to the site of that. An SRO receives training that is specialized to be a police officer in the school, but also work as a community participant in that school. And SROs, school resource officers, have been around for many, many years. There was a large grant program back in the late 90s that the federal government put forth. That grant program, which we have investigated, as you would imagine, unfortunately is now funding only school resource officers in your high need areas, and they have to have a proven area of need either with drug epidemic or crime epidemic. And it's, it's from the federal government that those requirements come out. But as of right now, we've done what we've been told in the past to do in terms of requests, because it continues to be part of our strategic plan, and we're, I do have a meeting, as I mentioned earlier, later this week, where we're going to discuss, I'm sure, that topic as well as other safety measures.
And has the idea been proposed in, instead of, if we can't fund all of the officers, which I think was a total of four, is the idea still on the table to have two that we can share?
We actually-
At least get us going.
Yeah, we actually, as a board, put out two, and then we upped it to the four after the conversation, hearing it as such a large community concern, but our initial goal was two, one to be on either side of town, we thought we could do the middle school and high school sharing, and then, of course, both of those schools get done at an earlier time, so then the person could go move on to one of the elementary, or at least be visible.
Okay, and is there anything as parents that we can do to help the process along? I know you said that eventually you'll bring it out to the parent, parent, you know, groups, but anything that we can do now as parent groups, because, you know, as you can imagine, a lot of concern in the schools, it's hard to have your child come home and say that they're scared.
No, we understand, I think that what you're doing tonight, just sharing your concerns, sharing them publicly, is always valuable. I know that parents have, in the past, shared their concerns directly to the Board of Ed, all of our meetings are televised, there's public comment at all of our meetings, you know, all the normal avenues that parents could, you know, put forth as that, as they have done in the past with concerns. The other thing that I do have to say about the SROs is that, again, there's, they're not just there, you know, as an armed guard. I think there's a difference, because I think some people say, "Well, just do what one of our bordering towns or nearby towns has done," which is hire retired police officers, have them come in. We've actually have done the financial analysis, it is less expensive, however, you have to have multiple people, and truly, they are just armed guards. They're not there to collaborate and, with families and students on the same level that an SRO is trained. This year, earlier this year, we had a presentation at Dad Camershall Middle School by a graduate who is an SRO in another district, and the amount of collaboration that this person has with her students in the school, and what she's able to do to help mitigate mental health issues, help bring the, to the attention of professionals who could take it to the next level, she's not there to actually do the counseling, but to actually act as another set of eyes and ears in a different capacity, was phenomenal. And so her, she really inadvertently, because it wasn't her intent in the presentation to talk about her role as a school resource officer, it did come up. And I think everybody in the audience that was there, and now upon reflecting on that, really shows that the value of that particular position. The other thing is that if these officers, they would be hired as 12-month employees of the town, they have, you know, our schools, we don't go year-round yet, that's for all the kids watching this at home. But the thing is that, right now, we have two months where the officers could potentially be used for overtime coverage during the summer, vacation coverage, all those different opportunities where I, I don't know the cost analysis, but I would be, I would assume there would be some savings for those coverage expenses on the town's part.
And that might be something, the coverage sharing might be something that we could possibly get from, if it was a police department, they could maybe share in that expense with us?
Correct.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sir Chairman, maybe I should say something on this subject. I think the SROs, SROs are a very difficult concept. To expect that a police officer is assigned to a school even though other events in town may be occurring that they must respond to is a very difficult thing. The police department is a highly mobile, emergency response, investigative, criminal enforcement agency. People highly trained, they are the only people in our society who can take away your civil rights. They do that because they have training and a license to do that, that is their principal When we talk about someone being in the schools and able to teach a course or do other things, that person could be called out at any time because of something is occurring elsewhere in the community. In fact, without the label SROs, our members of our police department on a, practically a daily basis, are in the schools, whether it's our civilian, the civilian youth officers or, or uniformed police officers, and I've gone over it with the chief, and, and we are going to be meeting with the superintendent, but the interaction is major, and it's all the schools, it's not just the high schools, it's not just the middle schools, it is elementary, they're in and out on a daily basis. The presence is there, but to have the police department committed to maintain a presence at one location, they're not trained for that. Highly mobile, emergency response capability. So if we need something on-site all of the time, that's when you get into security guards. Police departments are not security guards, they aren't trained for that. So I think we need to, I think everyone needs to be aware of the frequency with which our police department, personnel from that department, is in the schools.
I, I agree, I think there is a difference, and I think we'll probably agree to disagree about this for many months to come. The fact is that there is, the whole idea of developing relationships is not an in-and-out visit. You can't develop those relationships with the schools that way. I understand, and I guess we would have to defer to the fact that as school resource officers, and not just because other districts have been doing it for nearly almost 20 years, but that they are in other districts and they do work in collaboration with the police department, and they are designated to those schools unless there is a significant community issue. So, again, I, I think that it's, it's a challenge, I know that there's, there's two sides to each equation, and I have, and the mayor and I have already discussed this, so he's not hearing anything new tonight, but I just, I think we, we do have some continued conversation that will occur on this topic.
On my left, ma'am?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Chapin, from 15 Lincoln Avenue, and I was actually here to discuss the mental health workers line, but I figured if we're on the SRO topic, which wasn't my main concern, but obviously concern, I might as well just follow up really quickly with what the mayor had to say. Now, if I have my facts straight, I feel like the police department as it is, is already needing some more police officers, so if anything were to happen in our schools, and typically, I'm not the one that says, "If anything happens," but nowadays, we kind of have to. So if already the police department is kind of, and I know we're not really talking about that because we're talking with Board of Ed, but I'll just throw it out there, if already they're kind of short with police officers, then, also, if I got my facts straight, if we had the SROs, they would not only be there as SROs, but also, when they're not working in the school departments, they would be out on the street doing what they need to do as a police officer would do for the police department. I thought that was a great proposition, but is there anything that you can follow up on that? Because I don't, we surely do need something, I feel, you know?
I, I don't know what else I could add, except for, I know that, again, I think none of us would ever want to, you know, make any assumptions right now. I think we have to take one step at a time.
Right.
And I think we're, we're really having thorough and thoughtful conversation, and I think that's, that's a value add right there, I think, and we'll, we'll get, you know, we'll continue to get through this, and we'll continue to work on, on the discussion, but I don't, other than that, sure, what else I could-
I know, it's definitely a concern, I mean, we had a decent turnout a few weeks ago.
Yep.
And I know with a lot of family members of children that I know, a lot of my friends, that's a big concern, having the SROs, so I hope that will be further discussed for sure. But I will now speak on behalf of what I was here for, and that is the mental health workers, the social workers in our elementary schools. As a parent of a six-year-old at first grade, she, just, and also having a social work background, I do have my degree in social work, I definitely have seen as a parent that the social workers are needed greatly, greatly, on the elementary school level. And I know one of the big concerns and why it hasn't been approved is because it's going to be, it's not just a one-time funding, it's going to be every year, but we can't ignore the fact that it is needed, and that, yes, I know a lot of people think our town is phenomenal, and I live here, it's great, we have an amazing neighborhood, we are part of the Kendrick Park Committee, we raised a lot of money for Kendrick Park, which was fundraised, so not necessarily, you know, taxpayers' dollars, I'm also a Girl Scale troop leader of 15 girls, and we go above and beyond for our girls, and I have a lot of amazing kids that I love in this town, a lot of families that I love, and when I say that there's a problem in this town, just like every town, because no town's perfect, but there's a problem in the town and we need to address it, and some of the stuff that's going on in elementary schools is nothing what I thought would happen in our town, right? But it's happening. And the fact, and I'm very, very grateful for our school leadership at Stevens, because they've gone above and beyond to reach out to outside resources to assure they are going to deal with, that they're going to get the resources for the kids in the school, whether it has to do with trauma or anger management, because that's the reality, but people don't think that this is happening. But it is, and this is, this is society, and we need to help the children that need the help, because do you know what? If we don't, it affects, God forbid, the kids, such as mine, right, that doesn't need the help right now. Maybe she will one day, but she doesn't right now, and it's affecting her education, it's affecting her well-being, she now has developed anxiety because I could list the things that she's had to see or the things that she's had to deal with. But I'll save that for another platform. So please, when I say, and I'm speaking on behalf of just not myself, but a lot of people, that social workers, mental health workers are needed, and if they're not, if we don't get them soon, it's not going to be a good situation, because it's affecting the teachers, it is affecting the whole school community, it's going to then affect, when they're in high school, the Lyman Hall, you know, annual report card, because these kids are not, whether it's the children who have behavioral mental health issues, or the children who do not, it's affecting across the board, everyone. It is. And in regards to numbers of the special needs population, and I know that's an overarching diagnosis, but, I mean, the numbers are increasing. And, I mean, that's, if you just look at what was out on the table, the numbers within the last five years, it's gone up about, maybe within the last year, 100 people, 100 kids, and the free or reduced lunch has gone up within the last six years, almost a whole elementary school size of children. But not in our town, no. So we need those resources for our children and our families, end of story. So I really, really hope, I really hope, obviously, I feel like we're kind of, this year, it's not going to happen, but we need to take this seriously, maybe to get the social workers in our schools?
I think you missed my first comment when you were preparing to come up, maybe you were going through your notes. I did share that it is going to happen based on the fact that we were able to make and allocate reductions to the sustained services budget to accommodate those four staff members. So unless the Board of Education has a change of heart-
Right.
-that was their first priority on the strategic plan budget-
Right.
-and that is accommodated by the mayor's proposed budget and the reductions that I was able to make with my administrative team last week. So that is a reality.
Okay.
So I, I will go on the record again, it's on video, it's-
Sure.
-being recorded. That is, the reality is that those mental health professionals can be accommodated within the sustained services budget that was allocated by the mayor, the 1.6% increase with the reduction of things, as I mentioned, a utility reduction, there are additional staff decreases, probably at the upper levels because of enrollment decreases, the severance decrease because we are seeing less retirements than anticipated in non-certified staff, and then lastly, in terms of special education reductions because of some changes in placements. Those monies, plus about $119,500, to be exact, not about, $119,500 in purchases for textbooks, combined with those other reductions- combined with those other reductions equals enough money for us to bridge the gap between the 1.60% and getting the mental health professionals as part of next year's staff.
Okay.
I also, as we, you know, we went over in our, it was about two hours that we had met a few weeks back. I went over the many years, about the three to five years worth of work that the board has done in the area of mental health. This is not something that I, and I know you know this, so I'm saying this for TV land.
Sure.
But because a lot of people aren't here tonight, but we have not just suddenly this year realized that there are growing issues in terms of our students' needs in that area. Last year, as I shared with you a couple of weeks ago, in the fall, the board made a very, very significant contribution or investment in mental health services, training for staff, providing services for students through Connecticut Behavioral Health. It was over $300,000 allocation of new resources for our students. We had to do that by freezing other counts, we had to stay within our budget because the money had already been allocated. We also, at the same time, received a $333,000 reduction from the state for special ed. We had to make sure, so we we cut some other things that we were moving forward. Prior to that, we added psychologists at different levels, middle school, or excuse me, our high school, our specialized programming at our high school level. We added those to provide services and we do ongoing professional development. So again, I know you know all this, but I just want to make sure that the the listener or the person who's viewing this for the first time understands that this wasn't the first time that the Board of Education has a, has ever brought forward or has continues. I want to make sure that they know that we continue to bring forward these changes. That's why, one of the reasons why we changed our budget profile this year. And if if you haven't looked at our new budget profile, we have a district profile and then every single school, year over year of special ed, free reduced lunch, EL population, English learners, all of our different categories. We also have a page that I would really encourage, if you haven't looked at this page, or to all of our specialized programming. We have specialized programming now for students K2 with behavioral issues, 3-5 behavioral issues, middle school, high school. We have alternative programming for students who are not identified for special education. We have students who are potentially on the autism spectrum or other services that are needed in our Inspire program, our Stars program. We, as a district, did this intentionally because of the hard work of our administrators, because we keep our students in district. We all know that when you also look at our charts of our outplaced costs, those are going up, especially our private outplacements. There's public and private, there are not differences in services, just one is a little bit more expensive because of potentially what a student might need or what a family might request and, you know, we then go with that particular option. So we're trying to maintain students in district because in district programming, first of all, is best because it's closest to where the child is going to live, but secondly, it does help us in a more economical manner. So I just figured I'd take the opportunity just to share that because I know we've had the personal conversation and just to share that for the public watching.
Definitely. And I do appreciate your support, absolutely, on behalf of this topic, because I know you take it very seriously.
Absolutely.
And I will also say that the school leadership at Stevens, I can speak on behalf of, and I know that they are as well, I just hope the community as a whole sees that we need to move forward and take it seriously, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Corso?
Thank you, Erin Corso, 3 Juniper Street. I I'd like to speak quickly as an educator, a parent in the district, and also a member of the Board of Education. Mayor Dickinson, I I have a thorough respect for you and your commitment to our town and what you do with our budget every single year, but I want to respectfully disagree with the school resource officer piece. I think when we look at school resource officers, we need to think of what they can do proactively for our schools in our district, not necessarily just as a building security guard would do, which is a very reactive person in our, in our school. So I think that there's certainly ways that we can find as a community, whether it's Board of Ed, whether it's police budget, or collectively as a whole from our town council, that we can find ways to to fund our school resource officers in our, in our, at the very least in our high schools. Again, looking at it proactively and what what they can do for our students, for our staff and for our community as a whole, rather than just building-based physical security for our schools. Thanks.
Mr. Gross?
I'm Gross Longillroth. I have a quick question on this thing.
Sure.
Page 31, waivers, medical insurance.
I was going to say, you sat down so quickly.
Yeah, I was disappointed.
There were people behind me.
This is my annual question.
Well, it is because, you know, people are asking for additional funding.
Yep.
And I'm not sure that they understand what's in the budget here and, you know, I I know my position on this is that I I find it to be not a good thing, that I see it in here still, but I see that it's getting lower.
Yes.
And it's going way down. So am I reading this correctly, that the medical waiver now is $542,000 this year?
For certified and non-certified, correct.
Correct. You want to explain to the people what that is?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Or do you want to help?
I'll fill it.
We could, we could go on a road together.
Yeah. Just, just so people know, this has been, this has been in the budget and not from you or from, this is, I even think it might even predate the mayor, which doesn't, I don't even know if it does, might not, mayor's been here a while, but what it is.
Give him that one.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. But this is, used to be millions of dollars a year.
It was over $3 million when I started, nine years ago.
And so.
So now it's down to just over $500,000.
But every year the town pays this out.
It's in lieu of employees taking insurance. So what would happen is if an employee, and there were several layers to this, so if you had an employee in our district, if their spouse had insurance, they chose not to take it from the school district, they would get a buyout of anywhere from a high of 40% of the insurance cost to, now we're actually at a tiered level system. So a single person receives a single contribution, a two-party and then three-parties. So we've lowered that depending on the union. So teachers were the lead with the administrators to move to that model and then going from there, we've had the rest of our unions really decrease the percentage or move away from a percentage to flat rates. The fact is that we also had to, along the way, we realized that there were some employees that might be spouses within the same, within our district. So one was taking the insurance, one was getting the waiver. So it was considered double dipping, so that's also removed. So not only can they not be an employee both in our system, but also if their, if their spouse works for the town, there cannot be double dipping. So they can't take insurance with the town and then also get paid the waiver. So there's been a lot of nuances to this and I have to say, I have to commend, starting probably with our first, this first assistant superintendent I worked with, which was Jan Guarino, and then working most recently with Cindy Lavelette for their hard work in this area and the Board of Education being persistent. But it has allowed us to put money that was going in the hands for, in lieu of insurance, back into the Board of Ed sustained services and getting it closer to the students.
Yeah, because this year alone, just for the people here, you're looking at, last year it was 600, well, it was $662,000 just paid out. That's a lot of money that could have been paid for your social workers or.
Correct.
It's true.
Absolutely.
Those type of things. And this year it's still going to be 500, well, it was more than 600,000 last year, it was over 700,000.
It was over 700,000 last year, yeah.
700,000. And this, this year it's still over $542,000. When does this sunset?
What we've done is, and this has been a deliberate conversation, we do, we do need to determine when the breaking point is because you also run the risk of some people coming back onto our insurance. So we've been doing some analysis of that. Our teacher contract, our largest union group, is not up for another two years. So it, we do have to determine that and they have been, I have to say this especially, I shouldn't pick one negotiation, but I have to say this negotiation, this was really, they understood that this was a concern and I did, we have the utmost respect for that team because they got it, they understand that, they know that this is a challenge. But I think we do, we even need to determine with them, do you go to a quick, a flat zero where there's no waiver or do you just continue to decrease the tiered system so that we don't have everybody, you know, potential of a large percentage of people coming back on insurance, because then you have that adverse effect. So it's really, it's a balance. So we're working on that very closely with the unions because they care about, they they really do care about what goes on with wages.
I understand that, but this is something that should have been knocked out a long time ago.
I understand, so.
There's still 198 employees taking this, according to your chart.
Correct.
That's, and how many do you have that are workers?
We have approximately, when you take into all of our unions, close to 1,000 workers.
So it's 20.
So it's a little over 10%, almost 20%.
20%.
Yep.
That's quite a bit.
19.8%.
Yeah, if you have 1,000 exact.
Exact.
Thank you. A little math for everybody, right?
Exactly, got to do it.
April Brunches, 417 South Main Street. I was just going to ask if the SROs are idyllic, like what we want, is, is the armed guards or a security guard being considered? And I think you mentioned that they were. Would we be able to get that at a minimum? I know that we would want somebody to like be proactive, working in the schools, but just for safety before a police officer even gets there, we're talking, you know, seconds can matter.
I I don't think, and I I apologize if I misspoke, I think that we've, we've heard about armed guards. I don't believe that in our discussions with the board, the most recent discussions, that they were considered as an option over an SRO at this time or instead of an SRO. I think that we have more data to bring back to the board because this conversation is not concluded, obviously, because we're still in the budget process. The challenge in in also working with the police chief, because I know at the, the meeting that we had, the community meeting, there was a question asked about guns in schools. And I know there's been some interpretations, but I did call the chief about this and he could correct me if I'm wrong, that I know, you know, again, it's, it's, I don't think any of us feel bringing guns, you know, potentially for staff members or others into schools is, is the way that we would like to go. I think that armed officers can be invited into the school, but again, I think it, it's very limited in its nature and then the expenditure, if we look at it, even half of the cost of an SRO of over $200,000 for what we would need to accomplish with security guards, because it would take multiple layers of security people. We don't believe that it, I don't believe there's, there's, there's a feeling that it's going to add anything to the system. I think it does add a person, but, and maybe a psychological peace of mind, but in reality, when you have to look at allocating those resources, it, again, it'll be the ultimately decision of the board, working with them and will provide them the data. I think that there's just, there is, and I've heard from a lot of parents, there is concern that that resource could be better used elsewhere, those funds.
Right.
So we have to balance.
Yeah, and this is a controversial issue, so it would basically be the consideration of an SRO or nothing.
Well, I think i- in terms of a physical presence, yes. I I think that's something that the board has to determine. I think that in terms of other ideas, my biggest thought and my greatest, my gravest, or greatest thought and the, the biggest concern that I think we've heard that I agree with is that we don't want the people, the person who's looking to do harm to even get into the building.
Right.
So I think we need to circle back around to that whole conversation and that's what we're really investing our time. I have a meeting later this month, I believe it's the 24th, if I'm not mistaken, with some outside consultants to talk about that whole concept. I did have the greatest, I, thing come across my desk last week, I won't say the amount per application, but it was, it was a lot of money. They haven't put them in schools yet, so you never know, we could maybe reach out to them and see if we want to be the first, but there's, we have to look at that aspect of it also.
Right.
Because once the person's in the building, unfortunately, you have no control.
Right.
So we're really looking at that perimeter control and I think our administrators have done a phenomenal job working with their staff in that area and getting us feedback. The teachers have been incredible, giving us feedback. We have our district safety committee, which is a very active committee. So we're trying to look at all the layers. And we, we did a quick turnaround time from the presentation or the opportunity that we gave the public here, which was a fantastic evening. We did a quick turnaround time to try to get things in the hands of the mayor as well as the public, but we want to make sure what we do is the right thing. So we need to look at all layers.
Right, okay, thank you so much.
No worries, thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions for the Board of Education, then that is all for you. Thank you. And I will, if you could, I will go through the list again. If you are leaving because you are here for the Board of Ed, please exit quietly so people can hear me call the list again. Thank you. All right, any questions for animal control? Animal control, you're dismissed. Any questions for Board of Assessment Appeals? You're dismissed. Any questions for the Building Department? Capital appropriations, reserve in force, any questions? That's not being called. Capital and non-recurring, we have one. Capital and non-recurring fund. Civil preparedness. Civil preparedness can be dismissed. Conservation commission? Dismissed. The contingency account and other? I'm not going to say you're dismissed, though. Electric division, we do have somebody. Employee insurance and other benefits? No takers. Engineering department? Dismissed. Finance department, we do have one. We do have questions for fire and EMS. Government access TV? You won't be questioned, but you're not dismissed. Health department? Any questions? Health is dismissed. Island wetlands? Dismissed. Insurance property and casualty? Dismissed. Law department? Dismissed. Mayor's office budget? Mayor, you're not dismissed. Park and rec, we do have a question for the pension funds, we do have a question. Personnel pensions and risk management? Police department? Chief, you got the rest of the night off. Probate court? Good night. Public utilities commission, we do, we did have somebody. Public Works Department, we did have somebody. Register our voters? Dismissed. Sewer division? Dismissed. Six-year capital? No questions. Town council office? You two are not dismissed. Town clerk's office? No questions, but you stay. Public utilities, director of public utilities? No questions. Veterans Services Center? No questions. Water division? No questions. Wallingford Center, Inc.? No questions. You can go. Public celebrations committee? No questions for public celebrations, you can go. Masters Manor? No questions. The Wallingford Committee on Aging and the Wallingford Committee on Aging Bus Transportation Mr. Viola, you can go. The Wallingford 2020 Committee or the 350th Committee? You can go. And the Historic Program Matching. And the Historic Program Matching Program? None. And we did have questions for SCOW. Next on the list, questions on the Capital and Nonrecurring Program. Mr. Tredulo.
Paul Shorgillo, Two Bayberry Drive. The Capital Nonrecurring Fund that is part of the expense budget, and I guess I'll direct this to you, Mr. Boz, or the mayor, if you choose to respond. I have a perception that the way we're budgeting for that cap nonrecurring is that because we're putting it in the expense budget, it's becoming a part of the tax base. In other words, this year, we have whatever it is, 2 million or 1.9 million, it's a line item on the expense budget. Then the council approves the budget, raises taxes, and that 2 million becomes part of the base. And we do that every year. And since the nonrecurring fund is paying for nonrecurring expenditures, I believe the way it should be handled, and I believe that's the intent of how I read the charter and the state statute around this, is it should be, it should be treated as a surtax. You should separate it from the main budget and, because it's nonrecurring. So what you would have as an example, if you were going to raise taxes by this year, the mayor's proposing a .8 mil increase, if you look at the numbers, the cap nonrecurring fund is about .4 mils. So the taxpayer would end up paying the same total amount, but the .4 mils is nonrecurring. It's only for one year. And I think that's the way it should work, because by doing it the other way, it's cumulative, and that's what we've been doing. And I believe that's contributing to excessive taxation. So if you'd like to comment, I'd be interested in hearing it.
Sure. You're correct when it comes to the 1.9 million dollars on the expense side in the general.
Million, right? 1.9 million.
I said million.
You said billion.
I said, no. Let's not get crazy, right?
Be nice.
1.9 million in the upcoming budget year, which is before us tonight, but there's also a revenue for 1.9 million dollars in the general fund, which is the pilot revenue from the Electric Division. So in the general fund, technically, it is a wash, so there is no tax effect on the citizens for the cap nonrecurring. The reason why the items are even shown in the general fund is there is a, it's either the statute or a charter provision, and I've forgotten, it's been a while since I've read them, that states that the general fund shall collect those funds, which we collect on a monthly basis from the Electric Division.
Right.
It's almost like a sur, as a surcharge or a pilot, we call it a payment of taxes. The revenue comes into the general fund as a pilot. It's budgeted, and it gets sent out on the expense side from the general fund. It gets spent from the general fund, not spent on me, incorrect phrase. It gets transferred out of the general fund, again, just with bookkeeping entries, to a separate bookkeeping fund, which you did mention, you're correct about that, to keep it separated from the general fund in what we call the cap nonrecurring capital projects fund.
Right. I understand that, but we're kind of digressing to a different area.
No, no, we're not digressing, because you're saying, hold on.
Go ahead.
I listened to you. Please listen to me. You're saying that the 1.9 million or the 2 million dollars embedded is embedded in our tax rate, and it's not. Because now you would be correct if there were no revenue offset in the general fund, but there is. The pilot is recognized in the general fund as well as the transfer out to the cap nonrecurring fund to keep those books separately.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but I.
I'd be glad to show you if you.
All right. Maybe.
Call me up.
I just don't see it that way. If.
I understand.
You have it in the expense budget, and when the council approves the taxes, they, it's in the expense budget.
Okay.
But you're actually double dipping.
Let me propose this to you, then. If we took it out of the general fund, the 2 million dollars, we would also.
Not out of the general fund. I'm saying take it out of the budget.
Okay.
Leave it in the general fund. Do what you want with it in the fund.
Well, that's not my call to do what I want with it. But if we took it out of the general fund, expend.
I'm not saying take it out of the general fund.
I am. Hang on.
But you're changing the subject.
Hear me out.
Oh, here.
Hear me out. You want an explanation? I'm trying. Okay? Thank you. The 1.9 million dollars on the general fund expenses, because that's where it is, it's a transfer out, it's an expense. If we took that out of the general fund, we would have to take the revenue out of the general fund. It would still be a wash, and everything would be directly recorded into the cap nonrecurring capital projects bookkeeping fund. We do it this way because the charter states that funds shall be deposited and recorded in the general fund, which is what we do, and then we transfer them out based upon the budget authorization as ultimately gets approved. So it is a wash. The 1.9 million dollars comes in, the 1.9 million dollars comes out from the general, into and out from the general fund budget. So there is no effect on the tax dollar.
I disagree.
Okay.
Okay.
I respect your.
Yeah, we agree to disagree. All I'm saying is that it's, if you look at the budget, expense budget, it's a line item, just like every other department. And you add up all the numbers, and the council votes to change the tax rate to cover this cost. Once you do that, that 1.9 is in the base, and you do it every year.
Please look at page nine of the budget. You'll see a line item that's under pilots and taxes. The subcount number 41190, pilot, Electric Division, and you obviously go to the upcoming year, 1819's columns, you'll see a revenue in there for 1,900,000, the same as that's in this. So it's a wash.
I hear what you're saying, but I think that's irrelevant. I mean, everything, all of the revenue goes into the general fund, right? The fact that you, that you create a fund and put Electric Division money in there, you're taking money from the general fund, and you're putting it into the cap nonrecurring fund.
That's good.
You're identifying it as the Electric Division. It could be any, it could come from any place, but all revenue flows into the general fund. You're taking 2 million out and putting in the cap nonrecurring.
But if.
It's money, right?
I, may I try to rephrase what you might be thinking, and if I'm wrong?
Go ahead.
Please tell me, because it's hard to get in someone else's head.
Yes, it really is.
If, are you saying that the 1.9 million should be collected and recorded in the general fund, and then the 1.9 not spent? I mean, that's.
No, I'm saying that it's correct to put it in the expense budget, because you're spending it, and that's true. But because it's nonrecurring, it's not going to be spent next year, the same money. It should be a surtax, and you come back every year and do the same thing. Next year, you might decide to spend 5 million dollars.
I think we agree, but we just disagree on the answer, because yes, the money comes into the general fund, and it leaves the general fund, and both in the same amounts. So therefore, there is no tax effect. We come to a different conclusion.
All right. We can be here all night. I made the point, and somehow we have to get at it.
Let me just help with this way. We get a grant, the ECS grant, say it's 20 million dollars. That's a revenue, but that's not in our tax base.
Right.
Because our taxes are calculated without counting. We don't raise because it's, we get 20 million.
I understand that, Mr.
It's not in the base for what we pay in taxes. Well, this works the same way.
No, well, I don't, I don't think it does work the same way. Okay? You created a cap nonrecurring fund. You don't even need that fund. You can do everything you're doing with the cap nonrecurring without the fund. But we created this fund, and every year, we take 2 million dollars out of the general fund, and we put it in our expense budget. It's, it's right there. And then we add it all up, and we go to the council, and we say, we need you to raise taxes to cover all of this money. It's in the expense budget, and it becomes part of the tax base. We're not going to resolve it tonight.
I know.
But we have to disagree.
I'm sorry, I.
That's all right. I appreciate you trying to explain it.
I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Any other questions for capital nonrecurring? And Mr. Tredulo, did that cover your questions for the fund account as well? Mr. Tredulo, did that cover your questions for the cap and nonrecurring fund as well? Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up is Electric Division.
Bob Gross Longhill wrote, it might be PUC, but it's Electric, same, it's the same thing. Is Wallingford looking to do any solar or any alternative green sources of producing energy?
Not at this time.
The reason would be not at this time because?
Well, Connecticut does not require the municipal electric utilities to have any renewable stand, renewable sources in their portfolio. I'm sorry?
Your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. To repeat, the state of Connecticut does not require any of the municipal systems to have what's called a renewable portfolio standard or any renewable, you know, so there's not a requirement there, which is different from the investor-owned utilities in Connecticut. They are required to have a certain percent of their, so that's part of the reason. The other part is we're not aware of a cost-effective offering.
Okay, but there are some that, I don't know if they're, which one is Norwich Public Utilities? They like you guys?
I don't think they like us at all.
No, 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 I didn't mean that. I meant, are they the same kind?
They are municipal electric utilities. They just like, why?
Because they just went ahead and built a whole solar array.
Okay.
And the reason they did it was because, for one, it's green. Can you, and secondly, they did it with CMAC, who I know that you guys aren't too fond of right now either. But one of the reasons they did it was for capacity charges. And do we look at that?
I need a whole lot more details than you just saying it's for capacity charge.
No, no, but, no, I'm not, they're doing it because it's green. They're doing it for, they're doing it for a myriad of reasons. One is capacity charges, which are, as you know what capacity charges are.
Yes, they do.
And if we were to build a solar array, have you figured in the factor of the cost possible reduction of capacity charges, which make up probably the second biggest part of our budget?
We've not analyzed a detailed project in a detailed way, and so that's a question that's difficult to answer. What I can say about capacity charges, the power year we're in presently, capacity's coming in a little bit under the auction numbers. So instead of it being in the $7.20 a KW month range, it's right around exactly seven. The auction price for the next power year we will enter, which starts in June and runs through the following May, will rise to nine. That's the auction price, and that's anticipated. The year after that, it falls back to seven. The year after that, it goes down to the mid $5, but less than $5.50. And the year after that, it goes down to $5.31. So there's a bit of a capacity cost bubble working its way through the ISO New England markets now. And so perhaps they looked at the numbers and convinced themselves that being there for the $7 and the $9 years, the project made some sense. I would be very surprised if the project made financial sense for capacity reasons alone in a $5, a $4 market.
But you say that, but you just said previous to this that you haven't done any analysis, and that.
No, but I have a sense of what these things cost. They're 20-year projects, in that that's how long you're going to own them if you want to, you know, use them up and get the total goodness out of them. And for, I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect they did it largely for the perceived indirect benefits of green generation as opposed to this is the cheapest way to do this.
And what's wrong with that?
It's not my mission.
Well.
My mission is to bring Wallingford, to safely bring Wallingford the least costly power as reliably as practical.
And I understand that, but you, and I don't mean to, but you just said you didn't do the analysis. And if you haven't done an analysis, how do you know? And if other communities are starting to do it, there must be a reason why other places are starting to do it. And in the future, green is the way to go. I mean, you're relying on natural gas for the majority of your power right now.
I'm relying on the market to sell me energy. I don't know specifically.
We know that New England, most of the generation is natural gas.
Everything new appears typically natural gas.
And so, and we get a lot of it from that, and because you do futures on natural gas.
No.
You're.
My future's on energy.
Well, but.
We don't, we, we have no positions, we have no positions in natural gas.
But I understand.
None of our, none of our power purchases are indexed against natural gas.
But a lot of it's based, but those futures are based on what the price of natural gas is in the future.
That's something that the other counterparty has taken into consideration and assumed that risk themselves.
I would just hope the council or somebody would at some point ask you to do an analysis. I mean, if other projects such as Lend Lease, which I guess is coming to the council tomorrow night, and they're looking to do their solar array, which we should be doing, not they should be doing, but that they're doing on, what, 50 acres over there of town land or so? Well, I, well, you must know some of it, because they're going into the interchange.
I know something about the project. I don't know about the land detail.
Okay, because they're going into the interchange. So, I mean, I, when, so you know some of the projects, so I'm not trying to, I would just hope that the town would look at some of the futures. I mean, it is, everybody, not everybody, but more and more, even Saudi Arabia is building the largest green.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Gross? Do you have a question about the budget?
Well, this would be something that would affect the budget. Yeah, well.
No, but, but we have the power supply budget. Do you have a question about it?
All right. Then I got a question on CMAC. Do you feel that the CMAC is, you've, guys have spent about 2.75 million, according to the newspaper, and I don't know what you spent. How does that affect our rates? That's the budget.
The costs to pay for what we've done so far have all washed through the rates. This budget has a, this upcoming budget has a modest amount of what we call above-typical legal and outside services expenses in case there's the need to spend any money on that endeavor after the 30th of June. And it's, what's the Electric Division budget in total? 78 million dollars. There's a, I believe we budgeted 130,000.
So when you say washed through, that means we've paid through it already in our rates in previous years.
Okay, yeah, in the rates. Yes. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Alita Sala, 241 North Woodlesee Avenue in Wallingford. So back to the solar, because I do think that would have an impact on our budget in the future, if not this current budget year. I work for a commercial and residential solar company who specializes, 80% of our business is commercial solar, and we do towns, we do municipalities, we do all, all of that. I would be happy to come up with a proposal if you'd be interested in finding out what solar could do for Wallingford. Would you be interested in that? I could leave you my card.
Sure.
Okay. I think it'd be very important for our town to do, for our future. If we, one of the things that attract people to Wallingford is our low electric rates, and if we're looking at the future, to own our own ability to produce power, to make that investment now, will pay off in spades in the future. And for all the residents in the town, I think it's incredibly important to do.
See you when you're done. You can give me your card.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions for the Electric Division? Are there any questions for the Public Utilities Commission while we have the gentleman here? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much, guys. Finance Department? Any questions for the Finance Department? No. Fire Department?
Fire. 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 Fireman. It's real simple. Huh? I'm sure it was fire. They're sitting here. Good evening. Bob Gross Longhill wrote, "Quick question. The staffing of the Fire Department, is that, how do, how do you figure out how many firemen you need and EMTs you need to be on staff? Is it on your number of calls, number of, how does that work?" Is it on your number of calls, number of, how does that work?
It's on a per unit basis, so yes, it's definitely correlates to the call volume. Um, we have a minimum amount of trucks, so we need, we need two pumppers, an aerial truck, uh, a shift commander's car. And then the EMS presence, we have different during the daytime versus night, and that's based on traditional call volume. So we have peaks during the business day is our highest call volume, so we have two ambulances on during the day, one ambulance on overnight. We have a rescue on during the day, again, to address that call volume. So staffing is directly correlated with incidents.
And do you keep a log of where all your calls go? And do you have an idea of where your call, are you called like the Route 5 corridor all the time, or do you have a?
We have a decent amount of data that, um, has districting, but the problem is our stations are fixed, so we can't move units, you know, unit utilization that an EMS system would have moving to ambulances to a different community, for example. We are housed in buildings and those buildings are located based on historical, uh, call volume and, and our goal is to get to every incident in a certain amount of time. So that's our, our ultimate driving force.
So do you have, um, like, do you know where, you can pinpoint where your number, like, the police department's not here, and I'm just surmising this based on past years, what the fire, the police chief has said. Their call, their majority, not the majority of their calls, but they can say that a lot of calls go to Walmart because of shoplifting and disturbances there. It's just nature of the beast. So do you keep track of where your calls go? Do you know where your calls are?
We do, but, but again, because we, we don't have the flexibility of moving fire stations.
I'm not saying to move.
No, no.
I'm just saying, like, do you, do you come to the town hall 102 times last year?
We, we don't statistically track it exactly, um, but we know by the amount of time it takes us to get to calls. And when you get to the periphery areas of the town, obviously the, the response time is greater, but the incidence level is much lower as well. So, uh, we don't track it on a daily basis, uh, there's no purpose to that.
So you, you don't have an idea of where you make your most calls to?
Oh, we do.
Okay, that, absolutely, that's what I was asking. All right, thank you. So, well, yeah, um, so the number of calls, that correlates to how many staff you have to have? If you had less, if you had half the number of calls that you had this year, you would have less staff?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Because again, when an incident happens, now you have a difference between EMS and fire. Uh, the fire, there's a minimum amount to safely go after a fire in a structure, um, at traffic accidents on the highway, things like that. You need a minimum number of personnel. So you have that minimum number regardless of incident levels. So there, it's a, it's a very complex matrix in how you do this.
This is just a kudos to, I mean, I had a family member that was ill for a couple of years and, and unfortunately had a call EMS at night sometimes, and they were wonderful. And I'm just wondering how the whole thing works. I mean, after a while, they got to know the house, unfortunately, that they were going to, so, but yes, no, it's, I'm just wondering how that all works. Sure, thank you. Paul Schardel, two baby drive, excuse me. Um, what, can you give me an idea of the mix of calls that you do? What percentage are medical versus fire?
In, in a very separated response, there's 82% of our calls are EMS related, remaining percentage, 18% is strictly fire. However, the fire department, the fire engines, first responders do respond to many of those medicals. So it's not quite as clean as saying 80% medicals and, and the fire trucks don't go out except for the 20%. Uh, they are intermingled. So a motor vehicle accident, for example, would be an EMS response, but it's also requiring because of the other hazards, a fire department response. So, uh, a fire department only response or fire, traditional fire engine response is about 1,500 runs versus the rest are EMS runs.
So you have that many fires, 1,500?
No, not 1,500 fires, but EMS, or sorry, fire responses. So there's all different reasons, but actual fires are obviously not 1,500.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm trying to get an understanding because I know you're going through a transition. You know, 50 years ago, the fire department did fire because we had a lot of fires. Today, to a large extent, technology, whatever, we've defeated fires, we still have them, but it's very low volume. And, uh, you know, many companies or cities, as we are, I guess, are transitioning to more of a, taking those fire resources, and I know it's a different, a whole different career field, and transitioning into medical. And I'm just wondering how we're, you know, is, have we acknowledged that?
We actually made that transition back in the seventies, so we are.
So you're on it now?
We've been doing EMS since the 1970s. Um, so we're definitely in that, we're actually a forerunner in that process. My predecessors have, uh, made great inroads in that area. Uh, one of the other things to take in consideration is, is you're right, uh, my career started 37 years ago. Um, at that time, we had four volunteer companies in this town, uh, enrollment probably in the close to 200 members range. That number's dwindled, we have two volunteer stations now, and we're in the 50 member area. So we had great capacity because of our volunteer presence. There are still great members and great responders, but their availability as those numbers dwindle, uh, that number of, of support is, is not there like it used to be. So you need a, a foundation, a certain amount to cover your incidents, and that's basically the level we're at. Uh, we're tapped many days with clustering of calls. So where the predominance of our calls happened during the business day, we could have four or five calls happening simultaneously. So you need the ability to cover that many different calls, predominantly medicals. But at the same time, you can have a motor vehicle accident requiring extrication, you could have other things happen. So our capacity, um, has been challenged, like our industry, all of our partners. So we're embedded with mutual aid. So the city of Meriden comes in, helps us, we go to help them during those surges. We're partnering with North Haven and North Branford. So the, our hope is that if we're busy, they're not, and that way there, we're sharing resources. It's an expensive, um, enterprise firefighting and EMS, it's a lot of assets, but you have to have that ability to handle the normal predictable amount of calls.
Yeah, I was just wondering where we're going in Wallingford, because a few years ago, we created a, a separate entity for emergency medical services. And I'm looking over here and we have this more substantial organization that is the fire department. But in fact, what you're saying is, is not really just the fire department, it's more of a, a medical.
Right, the EMS enterprise group, we have all the same assets, they're just embedded in the fire department now.
Okay, thanks.
You're all, Joseph? That's it, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, finance, you do have some for finance, okay. You, you're gonna be here anyway, you just wanna hang out? Okay, that's fine, great, thank you. Parks and Recreation?
Good evening, how are you?
Alita Sala, um, 241 North Woodlesee Avenue Extension. Uh, just coming here tonight, John, you and I have had conversations about the, um, upcoming year for the pool. I understand that it's funded as it is, as it was last year. And you and I have talked that, um, the way it's funded this year does not address the issues of why tag sales have fallen, why people have stopped attending, et cetera. So that while residents and people that I've heard from, the 200 or so that I'm in contact with now weekly, are very happy that the pool is funded for this year, we're still concerned about the future of the pool and what's going to happen going forward and how we're going to address the hours and the length of the season and the amenities that people would like to see improved there and provided there, um, to make their tag purchase more of a value. And I think we would then see more, more attendance.
So that's correct. Uh, in our budget proposal, um, the lifeguard portion of it comes out of our budget, all the maintenance items comes out of public works budget. Um, the park and rec commission has been meeting, we've had seven meetings since, uh, the first of January, every other Tuesday, uh, we continue with those. Uh, we're getting ready to roll out a, a general public survey with our summer brochure mailing, which will occur mid-May. So hopefully we'll get some results from that. We continue to meet and, um, try to come up with, um, some of the concepts that we've shared and some cost estimates. So hopefully, with any hope, maybe sometime midsummer or end of the summer, we'll be able to come back to council and do a presentation.
Excellent, looking forward to it, thank you so much.
Thank you, any other questions for parks and recreation? Nope, all right, thank you guys very much. Do you guys mind if I skip pensions too? Yep, yeah, thanks. Public Works Department? Hello?
Alita Sala, 241 North Woodlesee Ave Extension in Wallingford. Um, just a, a quick question also about the pool, um, uh, since I understand that Parks and Recs has part of the budget and you have more of the repair and the chemical portion of the budget. And, uh, while, um, uh, Parks and Recs was funded fully for the season as, as they had asked for, are you also funded for the repairs that you need to do and the chemical portion of the budget?
Unless there's major repairs, we would be funded for the season.
Okay, excellent, thank you so much.
Any other questions for Public Works, for Mr. Morganstein?
Larry Morganstein, Mr. McCully, uh, just.
Your address too, just, and technical. Your address too, sorry, just technical.
South Main Street. Uh, if there is a major problem with repairs, what would be the contingency then? To follow up on Alita's question.
Well, obviously, if you needed, uh, major repairs, you'd have to close the pool and if the town would have to make a major decision, because any excavations down there, that's, would be a big job.
And when would we know that by? When would be the timetable to make that determination?
If you were going to do that, you would, uh, you would have to fund major, any major repairs, so right now, we're gonna continue. Right now, we, we're continuing the way we did last year.
I don't think you're understanding my question. When you were asked a question, you would, you have the funding right now, you said to open in the pool if there's what?
The general maintenance of the pool, like we did last year, but there was no funds in there for major repairs, no.
So we would not have any contingency to do major repairs?
Correct.
And when would we know that by? When would you determine whether it needs anything more than what we normally do?
We would have to evaluate it as we go through the season.
Well, wouldn't you know that, when you prepare to pull for the season, when is that?
Uh, that's.
Typically in June, May. We start heading down there in May, empty the pool out, clean it out, patch, repair, paint, um, we repair the coping down at the pool. But if the pool fires up, Mr. Morganstein, underneath that pool is all PVC pipe. PVC pipe can separate at any time. It's, it would require a major excavation of the pool, that's a paved surface down on that pool, it would have to be saw cut, excavated, paved, the leak would have to be turned, determine where it would be found. It's not an overnight job.
No, I wouldn't think so.
It's a very, you know, it's a, there's a lot of piping underneath that pool, um, and it's gotta be what, 20 years old plus now?
It's just that, again, if we're gonna be starting and getting the pool ready, I wanted to know what that timetable would be.
Early, mid-May, we head down there and start prepping.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the Public Works Departments? No, thank you very much, guys. SCOW?
Bob Gross Long Hill Road? Questions? I have a question, well, of course, a couple of questions for you. One is, um, you take care of, uh, a community here in town of Wallingford, and there's this DACA program that's going on. What is that and does it affect you?
Well, it's the Defair Action for Childhood Arrivals. It's a, a program that grants, um, some, eh, eh, immigration legal status protection to, um, certain, uh, a certain group of those individuals. If they have to fall under a number of requirements.
Right, but right now, we hear in the news that, um, DACA is through our president not going, might fall by the wayside. So I assume based in every community in, in America, it doesn't make a difference, Wallingford, Meriden, Cheshire, there are participants in that program now that live in this community. And they can't be happy about what's happening, as many people in this community aren't happy about what that's happening. And this is why some of this goes to the council. I know that you provide some funding for SCOW and to help them do their mission. But right now, I think more importantly for everybody, especially counselors, is to, um, let our elected officials know in Washington, whether from Connecticut or wherever, that this is something that's affecting everybody. I mean, I know there are some people who are gonna say, well, they're illegals, throw them out, but they're humans and they're people, and they should be treated as such. And that, um, if you can do something about that, it starts at a local level. I mean, there are people up there, you just look at the names on the board up there, nobody was born here. Everybody comes from a different country. Um, one, one counselor that's here, I, I'm a sex into the cemetery here in town, and his family members are buried in my cemetery, uh, dirty fish mines. And, um, they are. And, um, some of them came over, I assume, because of persecution at some point, because they were Jewish. And, and this is what's going on here. It just reminds me of a time that I wasn't alive, but my grandparents were, and people ran. And they do that now, from Central America, from South America, from Africa. And I don't know how to, you know, there's marches, but you're elected officials, you can get together, you can talk to Ledvazano, who then can talk to so and so, who can talk to somebody and get to Washington. And if it gets back to our president and to the attorney general, that if there's enough of you around the country that do something, then something might change. Because right now, in my perception, we're in a very racist state right now, when we have things coming out of Washington, the way that they're being said. And we're all people, I don't care if you're black, white, yellow, uh, whatever religion you are, um, we're not tolerant society right now, and it really should be. And so I just hope that the, uh, that's why I kept you here. I wanted, because, I mean, it's, it's really, uh, it's nasty. And when you wake up in the morning, you see somebody calls S, uh, uh, continent, uh, an asshole, and I won't use the word he used, because we're in a public forum, but, I mean, that's permeating down to his supporters. And I know that there's both sides of the aisle here, and I can't say that any of you can support that. And if you do, you don't belong up there, because those are people too. And so I just hope that you guys will take that to heart. And as, you know, I talked to clergy about this, not my clergy, um, but I talked to a Christian about it, and he gave me some stuff about how you should treat everybody the same, it doesn't make a difference. We do that too in ours, because a lot of the stuff he gave to us was from Job or Isaiah or something, or Job or Isaiah or whatever. So you really should look at this, and I mean, I'm passionate about it. I know that you must be passionate about, must be a hell of a time for you down there right now. I mean, you must have people here who are here illegally that are scared, I mean, so I just, I mean, I know you guys aren't gonna respond now because you can't. I don't know when you could, but hopefully you guys can do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your question and for raising this concern. Um, eh, I do, it is important for everybody to keep in mind that these children and this youth are part of our community. They are our neighbors, they work at our local businesses, they are very much part of our community, they're human beings, they're wonderful kids with goals, with dreams. And, um, right now, they are going through a very, very tough time, and, uh, it's not good for anybody in our community. I must say, however, that I have had many conversations like this with many of our local leaders, many of our town counselors, um, the mayor, our, eh, legislators at the state level. Um, there is tremendous, a tremendous amount of support, um, the business community too. Um, but I do agree with you that is, that we need to do something, that people need to come together and, uh, and, uh, raise their voice in support of this issue. and raise their voice in support of this issue, because it's-
And it's not just the DACA people, which, it's also the people that have been here for 20, 30 years. To send them back now would just be cruel. And, I mean, granted, if they've committed a, you know, if they've committed murder or whatever, yes, that's a different story. But they make it in the press, that's everybody. It's a minute number of people that have committed a crime, a real crime. It's, so, it's, I don't know what to say, but thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Anything else for SCOW? No? Thank you. Where are you? We'll come back up to finance and then pension.
Finance, I don't know where to go with this. It's pilot programs, so I assume it's your department anyway?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. You have, you have the, I am Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. How are you? In here, it has the pilot programs, and it's essentially $5.8 million, but it doesn't break it down. Where do we get this money from?
Which pilot are you talking?
Well, it just says pilots and other-
The pilots are-
It doesn't break it, is there a page in here that-
What page are you looking at? Because it does break it. I'm sorry.
One.
Yes, on page- Pardon me while I get there. Pilots are broken down on page- Page nine. Under section two, Roman numeral two, pilots and other taxes. They're the usual suspects that we're all familiar with.
So, looking at that real quickly then, I don't see in there, are we, in the future, we don't get anything for the Mira land over the old trailer park? But are we, have we ever asked for anything there?
I don't know that.
Who does that? Who follows up on what we have that's land that belongs to the state or to a non-charitable organization and that we are not receiving any money for? Who follows up on that and who asks the state for anything?
Is it state-owned property or is it? The state-owned property, there actually is, let me find it.
It's a quasi-state organization, correct, Mayor? It's quasi-state?
Yes, it's called Mira. I don't think any of their holdings are eligible for pilot payments.
And the reason would be, why wouldn't they be eligible for pilot?
Because that's set by the state of Connecticut by law, where they'll pay pilots and where they won't.
So they're gonna start, maybe tomorrow, you're gonna sign a contract with Lend Lease. And part of the land, from my understanding, looking at the contract, is they're going to put some of these solar panels onto that Mira property. And it's gonna be revenue generating. Can we tax it then?
I don't know. It's a good question.
These are things that, when you sign that lease tomorrow, are you gonna be asking those questions? Those are, I mean, these are things that, I mean, you're looking for revenue. This isn't trying to pick it out of somebody else. This is something that's gonna be revenue generating over there.
It's a question for the Law Department.
Right. Well, hopefully then, you, you, two of you would know them better with the council.
Yeah, I will, I will, you know what, that's a good point, Mr. Gross, I will follow up. But if you looked at item number 41114, pilot state-owned property on page nine, you'll see, that's for all other state property, not necessarily the property that you were just inquiring about. For example, the state park, you know, state, if there's any state buildings in town. As you can see, next year, that's one of the grant programs that the state has reduced to zero. For, at least for most smaller to mid-sized municipalities. There are some other municipalities that have like state colleges. New Britain with Central Connecticut, Danbury, etc., that still get some of that money. But you can see, it whittled down to 39,900 this fiscal year is what we're expecting, although we haven't received it as of January. And as of next year, the 1819 request is zero, because that was in the governor's released, budget that he released on, on or about February 7th or February 8th of this year.
And colleges-
We weren't getting a ton anyway.
Right, colleges and hospitals went from one, it's, you're going from 152 to 89. Why is it going 70,000 less?
Same thing, that's what the state has allocated as the reimbursement to the town.
What did they take out? Who did they take out? Or is the reimbursement rate just lower?
That's correct. The funding, the funding rate with the various factors of the formula that they use has changed in most municipalities, even the larger communities such as New Haven and Waterbury, etc., they're getting a lot less revenue.
Is, and I'm asking this just because we, Ashley, we do only a percentage of. Is the other percentage figured into this?
No.
Why not?
Oh, I don't, wait on it, it's, you know what, I think it does, yes. I do, I do-
So you could show me then how-
Oh, that's right, Ashley is, you're talking to the care facility?
I'm talking about that they pay us the municipal part of the tax-
Yeah, the 400, little over 400 grand a year, that's correct.
And so they pay less than 40%, so essentially, they would mow on the educational portion 600,000 and change. But they don't pay that. So the question is, you ask the state for that?
Yeah, the other portion, I don't believe is included in the pilot. I think that's all Gaylord.
Okay, so that's, so I'm asking then, why wouldn't that, because it's $600,000 that they don't pay in taxes, give or take, you know, based on 6040 on the municipal versus educational part of the budget? And I'm just using them as an example, I'm sure there's others.
I mean-
So why don't we ask for that?
Well, because they're probably tax exempt under the statute.
They're tax exempt, why are they paying us taxes on the municipal part?
Well, because-
And if they're tax exempt, then that's what the pilot program's for.
Let me try to answer the question, because you're throwing too many questions into it at the same time. In 1974, the town agreed, it reached, I think it was 1974?
Further up.
84? It was, it was 84? Thank you. The town and that organization reached that agreement to keep things frankly out of court and letting a judge, yeah, letting a judge make the decision. There was a case that was in northeastern Connecticut prior to that. And I remember this, because it was just as I was getting into government from public accounting, which is like another lifetime ago. So pardon me, because I don't remember all the details to it. It was in court, it wasn't looking good for the community, and they went out and they said, hey, let's stop fighting. It was a medical institution and an institution, something like Ashland villages. And let's, let's come to an agreement. That's correct. It's not medical, it's basically housing. And they reached this agreement with the formula laid down and said, we're gonna, we'll accept something in the way of the general government portion of the tax rate, if you will. That sort of, whether it was right, whether it was wrong, whether it would have survived in court, whether it wouldn't have, I do not know, but that sort of became the standard that a lot of municipalities utilize from there on in. Whether it's right or wrong, Bob, I can't tell you.
Hopefully, the council at some point in the future, the way that the federal government now and the state government's gonna be looking for taxes, they are gonna start taxing small universities and larger universities, depending on their endowment and so forth. That it might be time to look at these revenues. I mean, you had people here for the Board of Ed, not that I totally agree with everything they were saying, but there is, you're looking for funds.
I happen to agree with you.
So, but, so agreeing means one thing, but doing something is something else. And I know it's up to the council, I know it's not up to your department, but it's something that, you know, anybody can agree with everybody, I agree with certain things too, but unless you do something about something, it doesn't happen, so. And just, that's, that's my, and I'm just wondering if any of these pilot program lands or updated, you know, that type of stuff, that's all. Because there's a lot of it and we need revenue. Thank you.
Very, oh, you're welcome.
Anything else for the Finance Department? Pensions?
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road, she's not here. Then the pension, I noticed that the amount is 300 and something less thousand that was the actuaries versus what we're gonna fund. The reason behind that is, because normally, you do fund what the actuary says.
Yes, that's correct.
But this year, it didn't look that way?
The current year right now or the budget that's-
The new budget.
The new budget's built upon the actuarial computation as well.
As I was looking here, it says here, department request 7,743,000, really 7,744,000. But they're gonna give, mayor approved 7,400, 7,400,000, so it's 300 and 30,000 less almost.
That's correct. As we-
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the difference between the departmental request and the mayor's budget, I believe, is the $300,000 difference. The department request came from, comes from personnel, but I think I can speak for Mr.- Was based upon very early projections, because the budget, we asked for the departments to get the budget to the mayor by a certain time, so that we can really start working on them. And however, and you guys have probably heard me say this a million times, and I know the veteran councilmen have council members, I'm sorry, have heard me say this a lot of times. A budget's also like a timeline. As more and more information becomes available, we try to-
So you, so essentially, you have less employees, is that what?
That's correct.
So you have less employees than you were anticipating?
Less payroll, less payroll dollars. That's correct.
So you have, so there's less, so how many less employees are there between January and now?
That I, that I can't tell you. That I don't know. That was a computation by personnel.
Because that's, that's 300 and something thousand to make up that number.
That's correct.
And do we use BlackRock still?
I believe we do. It's one of our funds, yes.
Because there was a previous council meeting that a gentleman went up to the stage, and he asked if we can do an S&amp;P fund without gun manufacturers. And as you know, BlackRock is now doing that. They have taken out gun manufacturers and stores and places that sell guns. So, so you can't, if they have Walmart, Dick's, Ruger, whatever it is, they will not be in the, they will not be in that fund, they'll make it up in other ways. But it'll still mimic the S&amp;P as much as possible. Just something for the, I mean, to take a look at. They're so concerned about guns in the schools and everything, so we shouldn't be supporting the manufacturer and the sales of those instruments if we're so concerned about them.
Yes, I recall the conversation from the gentleman who inquired that evening at the-
I think he's still here.
I think he is too, but I'm ignoring him. Only kidding. But I've got it in my notes to put on the agenda for the next Pension Commission meeting, which I believe is in the middle of May. So if you want to call me on that, you'll see the, you'll see the agenda posted, just to take that up, just to get the thoughts. Not promising.
No, no, I-
Actually, I don't even think we're gonna put any action on that agenda. We could always call a special meeting to do that. But it's just to bring the item up.
And how often does the pension fund look at its costs? And does it do a yearly or six month or every two years comparatively? Because you're in S&amp;P funds right now, a majority of them. It should be more, but you're not. But the point is, since you're in those funds, are you comparing them to other S&amp;P funds, because not all are alike?
I know we have, we get a cost report every quarter, and we definitely do a, our financial advisor has a professional due diligence items that they have to complete each quarter. And one of those quarters is devoted just to fees. So yes, we do look at them.
So you're looking at the fees, because you guys have BlackRock, as you just said, and I-
And we just moved, I think, now that you're saying BlackRock, BlackRock opened up a different fund with a lower fees, the same investment criteria and the same liquidity, et cetera, et cetera. And it was about five basis points lower. And we did, we did move our funds from the prior BlackRock to that new fund by BlackRock with the same-
What I'm saying is, you have a lot of European, so it's time to take a look at that, to see what it really does versus the S&amp;Ps and get those costs down, because when you're talking tens of millions of dollars, those fees really add up.
Sure they do, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. Since I was referenced indirectly-
I don't know by who.
Me neither. I don't know how these things happen. I did wanna say that our talk was about divestment from pharmaceuticals, though guns are certainly something-
That's correct. I remember.
Yeah, because here we are suing and we're actually making money off who we're suing for the damage they do to our town.
I believe the note that I left for myself to remind myself when I do put the agenda together, I send a draft agenda to the chairman and to the members to see if they want to include anything else on there as well. Then when that's agreed to, we print it out, bring it to the town clerk for public posting. But in my, I think I used the word socially, socially conscious investments. I think it's just to include on investments, just so we weren't taking a look at a pharmaceutical or guns or anything else in that, just to pick their brains, because the three fellows who are on the commission who are not employees by the charter all work in that industry. We are really fortunate to have a fellow who is the Director of Investments for the city of, Steve Harford's pension plan. And I really wanna, I picked his brain a little bit over the telephone, and so now we're gonna, we're gonna discuss it as I indicated to you that evening at the next Pension Board meeting.
What I was hoping to do is that I wanted to send you an email, but somehow that didn't work. I don't have your email. But there was an article recently in The Hill, and what the state of New Jersey has done, and again, we're talking about a very big pension plan. They've divested from the pharmaceuticals because of the same sort of reason. And in that article today, referenced the state of California considering and moving towards the same. So this is not an impossibility, and if I could, I'd like to send you that article.
Sure, absolutely.
And again, I saw Mr. Gross was referencing, in terms of gun manufacture.
But as we, you know, something that I really didn't bring forward that night, as I thought about it on the driving home, we have to be careful, I think, and I hope you would agree, that we don't punish a company for our product when other products that they, that they manufacture and they market are doing very good things. And frankly, opioids, I've been on painkillers for major surgery that I've had. And, and, you know, by the grace of God, I maybe don't have the dependency or anything else. So, so I understand very well how folks could become dependent on those. But if a company produces some wonderful stuff that helps people and helps save lives, do we punish them, you know, for opioids? And how many of these companies that are selling opioids are family-owned and/or private businesses that don't have any information that they share with the Securities and Exchange Commission, so we don't know how much money they're making from opioids? One of the biggest ones was a company that built a family-owned business, forgot it. It was in the New York Magazine about six or eight months ago. Built a huge building down at Yale University with their name on it. They made 35 billion from opioids.
You're probably referencing the Sackler family, who also has-
Thank you for that, yes.
Smithsonian and others, a benefactor, a lot of great things. But in the meantime, what they're doing with their marketing and with knowledge of forethought, they are taking advantage and putting people's lives at risk and costing communities money, so.
Absolutely.
And you're giving with one hand, but at the same time, you're damaging society while you're doing the same.
I agree with you.
But there is a line there as to, you wanna target and you wanna make sure that you're making a statement. And part of divestment and socially conscious is to change things for the better, to make a more responsible, more clean and safer society. And that gets back to an early discussion about solar. Why do you invest in something like that? Well, we're looking at the future. We're looking at a greener earth, we're looking at a more livable earth. And again, that investment upfront pays in the future. And again, while we talked about, and you talked about your fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to get the greatest return, the greater return is also about the future of the people that come after us and the people that are here now. And the return of a better life is something that certainly has a value. And I would hope that when Mr. Gross or Ms. Cella talks about solar and the value of that, people are starting to hear from the people of this town, which the PUC and Electric Division represent, that that's also the will of the people. That people wanna see us move towards these things. That we have a right also that goes beyond fiduciary to produce a better town, a better world. And that's something I hope that the council also takes into consideration. Thank you.
Christina Tadda, 751 North Farms Road. I just wanna say, as far as the pensions are concerned, I think, I don't know that it's the job of the Pension Commission to, you know, to take on social issues. I think that if we start politicizing, you know, who we're going to invest in and maybe one person thinks this is a, you know, morally not satisfactory-
It's all subjective.
Right, somebody else might be for it. And I think if we start going down that road, you're gonna find yourself in a big mess with- you're, you're gonna find yourself in a big mess with who we can and can't invest in, so...
We discussed that a little bit at the council meeting, to what we're referring as well. I, and I told them I would put this on the agenda of the next Pension Board meeting, because these three gentlemen who are on that board, they've got tremendous experience in this, in this field, and I want to pick their brains. And of course, just, just for discussion now, and that's more of a long-term look at things as, because that would be a deviation from, from what the Pension Board does now. And frankly, you know, we do, like, like Mr. Morganstein did, did say, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Gross?
Just, it's not taken willy-nilly, and these, these are companies that have a social impact on our community that communities and states across this country have sued because of the products that they make. And that's where the issue comes in. And that's where there's been companies that have decided not to invest in tobacco. We've sued tobacco companies and so forth. And that's the issue. It's not to just pick because somebody like me might like an extra Twinkie now and then, and it makes me fat and unhealthy. That's, that's a personal choice. But when it affects society as a whole, with opiates and the suing tobacco or guns, the way that they're done, that affects everything. Thank you.
I, I agree, but it's, it's also a slippery slope. You just can't get McDonald's, Trans fats, you talk about anything. And, and don't, don't, you don't have to believe, but other people are gonna have very strong opinions about that. Walmart, Walmart, Walmart has put so many small businesses out of business, it's not running.
I think we're beyond the budget line questions, so...
Well, there's always questions that are beyond budget line.
I know, I know.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I apologize.
Try to be patient, that's okay.
I just, it is, it is, it is a tricky subject.
I don't dispute...
And I had two cups, cups of coffee before the meeting, so...
So a final word, and this will be very brief, is that my point was originally that the town is considering entering into a suit against the pharmaceuticals.
Right, I think that was understood, yeah.
Yes, so, again, if we're gonna be making a position of suing the pharmaceuticals, but investing in their product, which is making our communities suffer, I think we should be able to consider divesting from them. It seems hypocritical to have our hand out, taking money on the one hand, and then suing them for the damage they do. And that's my point, quickly and clearly.
Thank you. Any other questions on the pension? No, okay. Seeing we have no other business, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any objections, passes.